Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Bob Pejerman. I own Pejerman Gallery. It's in downtown Scottsdale. And first, I want to thank the five council members that directed the Transportation Department to exclude any mention of rail from the Transportation Master Plan. It is rather disappointing that the other two council members insist on having it in, especially Councilmember Cordy, who relentlessly is pursuing this. But, you know, Ms. Cordy is basing her pro-rail platform on two premises that are simply not true. One of it is that the rail route has not been determined, and the other one is that it will take at least 25-plus years to break ground on this. Now, Scottsdale Road, for the record, is federally designated high-capacity transit corridor that's slated for the fixed rail. So to say that the rail routes have not been designated are simply not true. They have been designated by the federal government. It will be Scottsdale Road. Make no mistake about it. It will be Scottsdale Road. And when she's saying that this will be 25-plus years, that's not simply true either. If this is passed, in a matter of five years, planning and construction can start on this, providing there's money, and you'll find money somewhere, I'm sure. You know, about a month ago, the airpark had a meeting, actually, the Chamber of Commerce hosted a meeting with the airpark merchants to discuss light rail. So if you connect the dots, everything that I just told you, and the fact that they're discussing light rail up there, means that light rail has to somehow magically go from the ASU to the airpark without touching Scottsdale Road. So are we really, really that stupid to believe that? And I'm not. So if we put all of this to a public referendum to really say this is gonna go up Scottsdale Road, it is not gonna be 25 years, it's gonna be, say, five years, do you really think you have the public support on this? By misleading the public that it's not on Scottsdale Road, and it'll take 25 years, perhaps. But we will spend the money on the PR campaign to expose that. So if it comes to a referendum in the future, we're prepared to handle it. The other thing that I want to cover is that there's a major disconnect between fixed rail and its effect on tourism. Let me put this up for a second. You've seen this before, the infamous rendition of the fixed rail being on Scottsdale Road. Actually, this photo is very, very sugar-coated because two lanes will be eliminated here. So I posed this question to the Tourism Development Commission and the other members in the tourism industry that are advocating fixed rail. Do you think this is really good for tourism? To have this monstrosity go in the middle of Scottsdale Road, from McDowell, technically all the way up to the airpark, destroying the resort feel of Scottsdale Road, eliminating left turns in many, many, many areas, and just having this unsightly appearance of this thing going up, it is really bad for tourism. It is not gonna help tourism, and furthermore, it will add to the traffic. By eliminating a lane in each direction, it will add to the traffic. It will not alleviate traffic. So I would say that if you truly want to improve the transportation options here, consider something else, not fixed rail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pejerman. Next is Sonny Kirkley, followed by Patty Badenoch.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Littlefield, and council members. My name is Sonny Kirkley. I'm the chairman of COGS, the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale, 7904 East Chaparral, A110 hyphen 127. We have to thank the Transportation Department. These people are incredible. They spent hours over the last 15 months, seems like it's longer than that, Mr. Basa. Director Basa, Jim Bartlett, people I've mentioned here, Madeline, they came out at night. There's no compensatory time for employees who come after 5:00. They came out at night throughout the last two years, meeting with organizations, meeting with neighborhoods. They would come out and meet with the three and four people that I arranged in a neighborhood with a traffic concern. They're phenomenal. So we really thank them. These are some of the issues that they covered in their very intensive Transportation Master Plan that you have a copy of. I've read every single statistic in it. It's awesome. Every question is answered. One of the things that might come up this evening, besides being impressed with their transportation plan, it might be mentioned this evening that, well, Tucson has a modern streetcar. I'm not sure how modern this is. The arrows point to things like overhead wires, here, here, going in the other direction, rails here, 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 and in the street, same place that traffic, cars, bikes, and so on. Here's another look at Tucson. This one shows trains going in both directions. This train receding, this coming toward you. Again, overhead lines, not terrifically attractive. But guess what Scottsdale has? Ta-ta, the modern trolley. It is absolutely beautiful. Our Transportation Department has purchased some absolutely beautiful, comfortable, air-conditioned trolleys. These little babies are flexible. They'll go any route. If the density in a certain area changes, you have more customers to ride, no rails needed, no wires needed, get those wheels rolling in the right direction. Very low environmental impact. Not only that, this is the best part, they're cheaper to operate. And you know what? They're uniquely Scottsdale. Scottsdale is special. This keeps us special. You want something going down to meet the light rail in Tempe or at 44th Street at the airport? Get these wheels rolling. Get these routes set up. Community support? You bet. We are proud of our trolleys. Our tourists recognize them. This is Scottsdale. This is us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkley. Next is Patty Badenoch, followed by Craig Cantoni.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Patty Badenoch, 42 resident here in Scottsdale. I found an article in the Arizona Republic written June 18, and the headline says, "Light Rail Is An Arizona Success Story, And There's More To Come." And it is written by a gentleman by the name of Roy Miller, member of the Phoenix Citizen Transportation Commission. And he writes, "I will confess that any time government takes billions of dollars from taxpayers and spends it on any project, there will certainly be successes, that is, a few who will benefit. However, by any rational analysis from the taxpayer's point of view, the allegation is nonsense. Light rail is a 19th-century solution to a 21st-century problem that will yield red ink forever. Even the leftists and the central planners who brought you light rail never predicted that it would make money, or that even more than a very small percentage of Valley residents would ever ride in it. So how's this turkey rated as a success? This can only be claimed by looking at the winners, not the losers. The great philosopher Friedrich Bastiya showed us this faulty analysis in his book, The Law, where he spoke of the seen and the unseen effects. The shiny trains running along the track and few people who ride them are the seen, and the great things that could have been accomplished with the billions wasted on the trains are the unseen. Because the densest areas of the valley have already been covered, the situation will only worsen. That is, the more we build, the more money we will lose. It is hard for the average taxpayer to accept this fact, but the reality is, taxpayers would benefit if we stopped the trains now and abandoned this wasteful experiment." This is from a gentleman, member of the Phoenix Citizens Transportation Commission, Roy Miller. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badenoch. Craig Cantoni, followed by Becky Finger.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm not part of any group. I live a block from Scottsdale Road. I've been on various HOA boards, and I'm currently living on HOA there, haven't coordinated with anybody, but I see that my remarks have already been said, but I'll say them again, I'm opposed to any kind of rail ever being in the master plan. I'd like a stake driven through its heart so it never reappears. And the reasons are the following. The first is, each time a rider takes light rail, he gets a $12 subsidy. He gets a subsidy from non-riders. And my feeling is, if light rail is economic, you don't need the subsidy. So clearly, it is uneconomic. Proponents of light rail also say that it brings economic development. Really, the only thing it does in economic terms is take money from some people and give it to other people, and rob development from one part of the city and bring it to another part of the city. Haven't we had enough failed economic development schemes? Ride-sharing apps are the new technology. If Scottsdale wants to be hip and innovative, it should be a leader in the new technology instead of being a copycat in the old technology. The world is decentralizing and devolving. Top-down planning and central control are giving way to bottom-up creativity, flexibility, and freedom. Light rail is a monument to old thinking. But if sometime in the future, the old thinking were somehow to prevail, then here's what I suggest that the council does. It does a pilot test on Scottsdale Road for a year. And the pilot test would be as follows. You close two lanes of traffic, you close a lot of the cross streets, and then you wait to see what happens to traffic and public opinion. What'll happen, I will guarantee you, is you will have massive traffic jams, and the citizens will grab their pitchforks and start heading down here to City Hall. Fortunately, they'll never get here because of the traffic jams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantoni. Becky Finger, followed by Praveen Jain.
My name is Becky Finger, and I am the official spokesman for Scottsdale Citizens Transportation Study Committee, and I'm a 20-year veteran of all these master plans. And lest you say, when we're through speaking here, "Well, we told you, people, we were eliminating it from the master plan." Uh-uh, don't believe it. Years ago, Robert Ledger, the editor of the Scottsdale Republic, said to us in print, "Can't you people ever give up?" Scottsdale citizens have said twice now they do not want light rail, so you can go home. Uh-huh, that's why I won't believe it until the day that it is not there. Did you all know that the entire light rail system in the valley was built on lies? Lies, lies, and more lies. The biggest lie there was is being told that building light rail, or modern streetcar, would reduce congestion and air pollution. Uh-huh. And actually, Valley Metro had hidden the figures that show it actually increases light rail, that increases pollution and congestion. They hid it so deep in their final environmental impact statement to the feds, they thought we'd never find it. Well, we did find it, and we were anxious to tell people. Why would you spend billions to buy yourself more pollution and congestion, plus all the millions of dollars in the maintenance and the operation deficits? So the next big lie, oh, by the way, the mainstream media hid that fact, would not print it. You like that one? Then, the next lie was that that's how the Phoenix rested $32 billion from the taxpayers by saying, this was their whole campaign, "For every dollar that you spend, you will get back $7 in economic development and investment of private and public sector." That whole thing, and I have the paper, the study, that shows that was a lie. That didn't materialize. Many of the projects were pulled back, eliminated, and a lot of those, this was only on wishes, supposition that we want $7.1 billion of development along the rail lines, and you get filled, that was supposition, and it was pulled back, and it did not happen. And a lot of those projects were not even related to rail, like the expansion of the Phoenix Convention Center or new high school. Lies, lies, again. I'm asking-
Becky, if you could, please-
Okay. One question. I'm asking each and every one of you, if I can show you, and believe me, I can, that light rail will increase pollution and congestion, and I offered on television $4,000 to fancy researchers at ASU and others to say, if you can prove me wrong, I will hand you $4,000 cash, and no one could do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finger. Next, Praveen Jain, followed by Pat Flynn.
That was close. Praveen Jain, 3006 North Scottsdale Road, Scottsdale, Arizona, 85251. So I, on behalf of 37 other merchants located on both sides of Scottsdale Road, between McDowell Road and Osborn Road, and 206 residents, request you, Mayor Lane and City Council members, please, 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 keep your decision to remove any fixed rail option as part of the Scottsdale Transportation Master Plan. You did it one time at the study session. Please do not change your mind. I just want to let you know that in a YouTube video, which was produced in June of 2015 by Channel 11, there is a pre-rehearsed discussion led by Councilman Cordy, and along going with Transportation Director Basa and two other consultants, which probably were paid by our tax money. They shared six pictures of empty lots along Scottsdale Road between McDowell and Osborn Roads, and they conveniently ignored taking picture of all the other established businesses which are not empty lots. They both asked the question, "Is this what we are trying to protect?" No, I'm here to tell you that, Mr. Basa and Ms. Cordy, you're not trying to protect anything but probably your own personal agendas. You're suggesting to City Council to write a death sentence to all those thriving businesses along Scottsdale Road, and nobody, and I repeat, nobody, gives you right, Ms. Cordy, to drive this or deliver this death sentence to the local thriving businesses. You tell me, what crimes have we committed? We are lawful, tax-paying businesses to make a living and servicing Scottsdale residents. In the same YouTube video, it is stated that connected means fixed rail. Last, I checked English Dictionary, even though English is not my first language, but I go by Oxford Dictionary. Connected and fixed rail are not synonymous. But the hired consultants, probably paid, sang to that sheet of music. So please, don't waste that time. Don't have them sing to your music, because that's not true. Do not repeat the same mistakes that Phoenix, Tempe, Mesa made, and other speakers before me have already said. Don't think 19th-century technology is going to solve the 21st-century issues. The express bus service that you proposed between the Thunderbird Road Park and Ride and Scottsdale Fashion Square, why don't you duplicate the same thing? And run it on any route? That's a flexible option rather than a fixed rail option. It's only a $600,000 bus. Everybody was affected by the recent economic downturn. All merchants, along with their family members located on Scottsdale Road between McDowell and Osborn, made substantial personal sacrifices during this period. We were very fortunate to survive the downturn, and we are expressing our gratitude to the residents of Scottsdale who really supported us.
Mr. Jain, if you could, your time has expired. If you could just wrap it up, please.
Okay. So please, 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 do not pass that death sentence, and do not kill us again. And we do not want to live next to those high-voltage, ugly, light rail lines, because we did not buy property to live next to those high-voltage, health-causing, health/cancer-causing lines.
Thank you, Mr. Jain.
I'm here tonight representing 215 individual merchants and property owners in downtown Old Town Scottsdale. Some of the signatures are, you may know them by name, it's myself, the Song family, Sabas, Richard Garcia, Cavalier, and Gilbert Ortega. We are exasperated, to say the least, with this on-again, off-again dialogue regarding rail that has gone on for over 10 years. We want this nightmare to end. For our sanity, health, and the uncertainties we face every day regarding the future of our businesses, would you please let the downtown, Old Town merchants and property owners know just how much they are truly appreciated? And keep out the fixed rail component of the Transportation Master Plan. We would be eternally grateful, and we very much heartily support trolleys. People like the trolleys, they ride the trolleys. They're flexible, they're great assets for downtown, and they would be a great asset for the city. They would not cause devastations to properties during the time of construction. If you do a rail system, we've all seen how that blighted areas. So we are very grateful that, at this point, we have rail out of the Transportation Master Plan, and we hope you will continue to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson.
Mayor and Council, Tom Mason, 40-year resident, Arcadia, Scottsdale. I may come across a little harsh this evening, but this rail option seems to never go away. It's always behind the scenes. And Councilman Phillips, yes, we still want to drive a stake through the heart of that. So take fixed rail in Scottsdale, not just a bad idea, it's a disaster waiting to happen. Yet we have several members in this council who adhere to an ideology of deceit, who refuse to take no for an answer. Throughout the year 2006, a dedicated group of individuals called Scottsdale Citizens Transportation Study Committee brought together four of the top five national experts on multimodal transportation systems in the United States and abroad. They reviewed, studied, and reported on the feasibility of implementing a rail system in Scottsdale. Unequivocally, they determined fixed rail transit was not conducive to Scottsdale. Two years later, 2008, I was appointed by Councilman Tony Nelson to the McDowell Road Task Force to come up with solutions on how to revitalize South Scottsdale. Virginia Cordy also served on that task force. With all the positive input that came out of over five months of deliberation, Ms. Cordy waited until the end, when everyone was gearing down, to talk about her favorite topic. She wanted to have fixed rail transit in Scottsdale as one of the task force recommendations. The task force chaired by Scottsdale Healthcare CEO voted no. Going on eight years later, that's today, and Cordy, now teamed with fellow chamber wonk Linda Millhaven, is at it again. Ask yourself this question: Do they really believe removing two lanes of traffic and destroying businesses all along Scottsdale Road for the purpose of running a crime-delivery system, I mean, train, down the middle will actually ease traffic congestion and pollution? Of course not. But remember, they adhere to an ideology of deceit. This simply isn't adding a fixed rail option to the master plan. If you listen to the work-study sessions, where the majority on the council already asked that fixed rail be eliminated, and I see it has been eliminated, but you realize why Cordy and Millhaven didn't want to remove that rail option. Light rail is their only option. Don't doubt me, it's their plan, their main objective, their number-one priority. It'll never go away. I assume that would include the bomb-sniffing dogs? For you and me, it would be willful suspension of common sense. But Virginia's request for an open dialogue is nothing more than brow-beating the public into submission. This has been her MO since she was president of the chamber, and I was her counterpart with the Realtors. I know her game. Mayor Lane and council members, enough. Don't fall into this trap. It's time to start rebuilding the public's trust in Scottsdale city government. Stick with your previous decision of removing the fixed rail option from Scottsdale's 10-year master plan. The city will be much better for it, and I thank you for your time. What?
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Oh, no questions?
That's not the forum. Mr. French Thompson, followed by Louis Giordano.
Good evening, Mayor Lane and council members. My name is French Thompson. I'm a business owner of 20 years on Main Street, downtown Scottsdale. I've lived in Scottsdale for over 30 years. I love Scottsdale. I think this is one of the nicest cities I've ever lived in. I've lived in Phoenix, I've lived in Tempe, I've lived in several of them in Colorado. We're in the middle of technology, we're in the middle of change in technology, we're dealing with stuff like Uber, we're dealing with future driverless cars, where I've been reading articles about future driverless trucks that are delivering, you know, goods all over the country. But the things I'm not reading about is putting trains in the middle of cities anymore. It's an antiquated technology that has no adaptability for demand, it has no adaptability for an express train going past the slower ones that are making stops all the way along. I saw an email where one of the council members is publicly campaigning that people come down here to support a light rail, being added back to this after, you know, the majority of the council said, "Please don't put light rail in this master plan." And I just don't understand the antiquity of going back 100 years to put a train on the middle of Scottsdale. It just, we've got technology coming up there that you don't even know what it is, and you want to go back 100 years. It's the most illogical thing that I can even think of. And I read all the time about what's going on in the future. I used to read science fiction. You know, that little phone I've got over there, Dick Tracy had it on his wrist. Well, we have those on our wrists now. You know, we're gonna have driverless cars in Scottsdale, we're gonna have Uber that's going around with no drivers in it. But a train? I don't even want to call it light rail, because it's really a train. And there's no adaptability for it at all, for either demand or where it goes. If you have all these other techniques that are at your disposal, I just, it boggles my mind that anybody would want to go back 100 years. So I just request that you do not put that back in our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Next is Paul Edmorgenstern, followed by Ward Atkinson.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, councilpeople. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I know that it's important to have certain things fixed: cats, dogs, some other things. But following up on the gentleman before me's discussion about an evolving city, I think an evolving city has to be flexible, not fixed. Agenda items 14 and 15 actually create new revenue. Working on a rail system of any kind would cost taxpayers an awful lot of money, and we are crying about having not enough money to buy more land for the preserve. Why don't we think about using the money for light rail, moving it to a pocket that would pay for more land- would pay for more land in the preserve? That's being flexible, and I hope you all will keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morganstern. And next is Ward Atkinson, followed by Howard Myers.
Good evening, Mayor Lane and councilmembers. I'd like to take just a couple of quick minutes and talk about a little different aspect of this issue. I've been a businessman and a landholder in Scottsdale for over 30 years, and have gone through the rebuild of Thomas Road and Scottsdale Road a couple of times. It's been very detrimental to our business, and so I thought I'd give you a little bit of background of what we're out to do and what may, may take place. I don't know if this chart, I had a PowerPoint, but I don't know if this chart will show up. But the black lines, and what I did is I used the Google mapping capabilities that are now available on your internet, the black lines are the width of this, the street widths all across the bottom are feet, I should say distance in feet. And then also, we have up in here, each time, we have a black one. This is Scottsdale and Thomas, and this is the information about 19th Avenue. The bottom line is, is that we've got streets that have been built for over the years that are so wide, we're now down to the point in Scottsdale Road that we've aggressed right up to the closeness of each one of the properties. You've got new apartment complexes going on on Scottsdale Road. And so if you begin to look at the dimensions that you're looking at, and I don't know if that shows up too well or not, but on the north side of Scottsdale Road up here at this point, our last widening effort was 102 feet in width is what we've got there to get in our traffic, right-hand and left-hand turn lanes and southbound traffic. On the south side of the street, we have a distance of 103 feet. Now, to give you a comparison, if you have not driven across 19th Avenue in Glendale, the dimensions of 19th Avenue in Glendale are 111 feet on the north side, and they're 121 feet on the south side. So right off the bat, we're not even going to meet the width that they have to put in at that particular point. The other thing I want you to note is, here's McDonald's right up to the edge of the street, here's Chase Bank, we know there's new project going on over here, we don't know what that is, and here is the Shopping Plaza in the other corner. They're right up there. You're going to go in and take and devastate these businesses that are in there and take them away, because I'm going to show you what it looks like over at Glendale. When you get over to Glendale and 19th Avenue, and I don't know how that's projecting up there right there at the moment, but you see, this land is completely vacant. There's nothing there at the, at this point. And as I say, on the north side of the street, it's 211 feet wide, and on the south side, it's 121 feet wide. And so you go in there and you keep saying, "I've got to have all this distance." This other gray line through the center section here, it varies up and down Glendale Ave, or on 19th Avenue, between 28 feet and 34 feet in width. So we've got to find all this land that we're looking for. The other one that's kind of interesting to watch in that same area is that's, and that may not be showing up too well, but that big long thing right there, that's the loading station for all our people to get on and off the trains. And it only happens to be 250 feet long, and it's 40 feet wide, and the width of Glendale Avenue is 121 or 120 feet? I think it's 120 feet at this point. There's no way you're going to get 120 feet in width and not wipe out an apartment building, storefront, or whatever else we need.
Mr. Atkinson, I'm sorry, your time has expired. So if you could wrap up, please.
And the only thing I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, you and the council members have received a PowerPoint and a PDF file of that. I'd like to make it available to all the people. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Howard Myers. Howard, were you last, last time? No, it was, it's strictly coincidental. Maybe, maybe it's a matter to leave you with the greatest impact.
You're trying to keep me here, is what you're trying to do, I think. I guess I'm last, so Howard Myers, 6631 East Horn Dale Trail. And I'm going to give you a little reprieve from the light rail thing, even though I agree with all the comments about it. And talk about 128th Street, and of course, this is important to the preserve to, to at least abandon the portion that goes through the preserve, which is right here, for major traffic. It could leave it open for emergencies. We recommend what the Transportation Department recommended, and that is to complete 118th Street first, which is this blue line. And that would provide the additional connection you need into that area. You're going to have to do that anyway. You're going to have to spend money to do that anyway, so why spend more money to improve 128th temporarily, or even to improve it good enough for regular traffic? Would cost you a lot more money, because the land's a lot more rugged there. So it's just a waste of city funds to do two of those. You can provide as many north-south connections as you want between Ranch Gate and Dynamite. Nobody's going to take any one of them, because they're not headed in that direction, they're headed southwest. And so they're going to be taking Happy Valley or Jomax, which are the yellow lines and the green lines. Very little traffic, as I said, will go down to Dynamite, regardless of how many you build. So why not just complete 118th first, which you have to do anyway, and then forget about the other one? And it'd just save you a lot of money, it makes the other connection you need, and I think the Transportation Department is already recommending that, so we recommend it also. Now, having said that, I'll jump onto light rail. Basically, citizens don't want it, merchants don't want it, it'll destroy the look and feel of Scottsdale, it'll destroy the business in its path, certainly when it's constructed. It'll bring more crime to the area, and I think you had an excellent email from somebody who actually moved to Scottsdale away from where Light Rail Corridor went through because of all the crime it brought in. I thought that was, was just excellent and brought up, brought up that point so well. But the main thing, too, is it just costs way too much. The initial construction cost, even if it's subsidized, is still going to cost the city heavily. Where's that money going to come from? Who will absorb the, the operational cost, which is way over? I mean, even in cities which have high population densities that might actually support light rail, it has to be heavily subsidized. So where is that money going to come from? Is the chamber going to give you that money? Is the Connor Health going to give you that money? All the people who want it, are they going to give you all that money? No, it's going to be us citizens who have to pay for it. So the data that, everything I said here, this data on the internet is easy to find and easy to access, and once you search the facts, I think you'll see light rail isn't the solution to a transportation problem, it is the transportation problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. And that does conclude our public testimony on...